Good evening. I'd like to open the Monday, November 1st, 2021, 6:00 PM meeting of the Union County Board of Commissioners. And as we normally do, I'd like to begin with the invocation. If you'd like to join me, please bow. Dear Heavenly Father, we ask your blessings on the task before us. Please give us the wisdom and the insight on our deliberations tonight. Help us to utilize our personal faith to give us strength to act honestly in all matters before us. As we approach Veterans' Day, please bless those that are serving in our military as well as all of those that have served. Additionally, please protect our law enforcement, firemen, and EMS that serve us every day. Lord, please give us the humility to always seek your will in all that you, all we do and say. Amen. Stand for the pledge, please.
Pledge and limitations of this civil right in the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty of justice for all.
Next, we have item 21-296, the North Carolina Cooperative Extension County Partnership Award. Andrew, I think you're going to help us with this?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board, Mr. Manager. Tonight, we have Dr. Richard Bonanno, the Associate Dean of NC State Extension, here to present the 2021 County Partnership Award to Union County. And, Mr. Manager, Mr. Mark Watson. So, at this time, if it pleases the Board, I'd like for him to say a few words.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm Rich Bonanno from NC State University, Associate Dean and Director of Extension. Mr. Watson, this partnership award is something that we present to counties on rare occasions. And we'd like to present this to you on behalf of our really evaluation and appreciation of the relationship that we have between Cooperative Extension and county government. When Andrew filled out some paperwork to apply for this award, we focused on really three main areas. One is, of course, the investment that the counties made in infrastructure, the buildings, the new special events center. It's a real reflection of the need that this county has, the support of agriculture in this county, and the support of the people in helping them pursue the dreams that they have. Secondly, we focused on the school program that's going on. We made a visit out with Brian Davis out at East Union Middle School. And to me, that's a great also investment on the part of the county to really show that the future can include a future that involves agricultural technology and science, and exposing kids at the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade level, the opportunity to see science in action and hope that when they get to high school, they'll look at pursuing a curriculum that leads them to a science-based curriculum, whether that's in agriculture or something related. So, and the third is really the inclusiveness of allowing our county extension personnel to be involved, as much as they are, with both the Assistant County Manager and the County Manager, in allowing us to do our great work with Union County. So, on behalf of myself, on behalf of Andrew and his great staff in the back of the room, and our South Central District Director Clint McCray, who's there as well, we really appreciate everything you've done. I see in the county office with Andrew, the spirit of teamwork, the collaboration, how everybody works together to make sure that we accomplish what we need to accomplish on behalf of all the people in Union County. And because of that, I'd like to present to you, sir, this County Partnership Award. Congratulations. Thank you.
And we are truly blessed to have the staff, the ender staff, that does represent our agricultural community. One of the best in the state.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to address the gentleman from NC State. I just want you to know that I grew up with Jerry. We went to high school. And I didn't think there'd ever be one as good as Jerry. And I'm not saying Andrew's better than him. But we are very happy with agriculture. Forty-six percent of Union County's footprint is agriculture. I tell everybody when I'm traveling, we're half Hollywood and half Alabama. So Jerry was a legacy, and Andrew's building his now, too. So, please don't mess with Union County.
Yes, sir.
Other than we're a model to follow.
Excuse me?
We're a model to follow.
You are. And, you know, I'll give you the side. Everything you said is exactly true. This county is a true model for the entire, for the entire state. I mean, the collaboration, the partnership, how you invest is really something wonderful. So, we certainly appreciate that. We could not do what we do in the state with all the partnerships we have with county government. And you all have done a great job emulating that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rafe, I want you to know, too, that I mentored Commissioner Rushing as a young child and got him to go to NC State.
But I went for animal science. He told me to go for landscape and horticulture. So, I didn't listen all the way. But I did look up to him very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming down.
Thank you.
Next, we have informal comments. And we have, no one's signed up for informal comments. So, we'll move on to our public hearing. And we have a-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I might, I'd like to move that we add to the business section of the agenda an item, exploratory initiative to research for water and wastewater allocation and allocation initiatives.
Okay. We'll add that to business, and we'll have it after the ARPA update. Is that satisfactory?
Sounds good.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, is that by consent, or is it going to be by?
We'll take a vote to add that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Richard. We'll open our public hearing. But first, we'll hear from Bjorn Hansen on the sharing
Evening, Chairman Helms, members of the Board, Manager Watson. This is a rezoning for approximately 3.7 acres in Vance Township, near the Monroe Expressway, from R-20 to RA-20, to allow cattle to be housed on site, keeping with the agriculture theme. There are no conditions associated with rezoning because it's not a conditional rezoning. This is just a straight rezoning from one category to another. Existing conditions, it is a residential road, large lot residences in all four directions. Behind it is the Monroe Expressway. In terms of adjacent municipalities, Stallings is immediately to the west, Indian Trail is to the east. We did coordinate with Indian Trail. They didn't have any comments about the rezoning. In terms of development status, it is a lot of development that's already occurred in the area, both residential and industrial and commercial. There are some large lot underdeveloped and undeveloped parcels nearby, including this one. In terms of, you know, what it really looks like from the air, it is an undeveloped site with a house up in the front. The Monroe Expressway is immediately behind it, undeveloped areas across the street and behind it with subdivision to the northeast. It is on the edge of the Union West Industrial In terms of utilities, Public Works can't commit to providing sewer capacity to the site, although lines are in the area for both water and sewer. That would mean that if they did look to develop beyond what's already there, it would be a challenge to serve it with sewer. So, you'd be looking at septic as an interim solution. And of course, all improvements would be at the developer's expense. In terms of zoning for the area, it is a mix of commercial, industrial, some residential. And this is in a residential district, currently zoned R-20. In terms of transportation, Monroe Expressway is directly behind it, served by Sharon Road, linked to Union West, leading out to the Service Drive along the Monroe Expressway. No funded improvements immediately in this area. In terms of land use plan, this is reflecting the previous land use plan because this is what they submitted when the plan, or the plan that was in effect when they submitted, was the previous land use plan. So, that's what they would fall under for our recommendation. It's essentially the same. It's a commercial area with high-density residential as the underlying recommendation. But this is an employment node, both due to US-74 and the industrial parks that are immediately at this interchange. In terms of public feedback, we received one letter. Since the signs were posted on the property, nearby property owner opposed the rezoning due to potential smell from the cattle, if allowed on site. There were no comments made at the planning board meeting when it was held in the summer. In terms of our recommendation, one negative is that this is continued residential uses in an area planned for employment type of uses. However, the positives are that this is consistent with what's immediately surrounding it. It won't affect the long-term potential to develop for employment land uses because it's already a residential area. The permitted density is unchanged, so it's really not an intensification of residential character. Just gives the property owner some flexibility. Planning Board unanimously recommended approval, and we have staff recommend approval. The applicant is here and signed up to speak and can give a little bit of background on his proposal or intentions of use for the property. Otherwise, I don't know if there are anyone else signed up to speak this evening for the public hearing.
Yes, there are a couple-
Okay.
-signed up to speak.
All right.
Ask you a question. I know, just moving out of a community that had, was an equestrian community, and there were restrictions on how many animals you could have on particular site. Is that applicable here? With, I know, my understanding, there's a horse, and then there was, I was told, one cow. Is that one cow? Or, but this says cattle, and that could be multiple.
There's no, there's no restrictions on the amount of cattle that could be put on the property. For horses, it's one acre per horse of what's fenced off as the area for the horse. Obviously, the house and the area surrounding that is for residents. But the remainder, whatever the property owner chooses to fence in, would be what you would use to calculate the number of horses that could be allowed. But yes, it's really unlimited in terms of cattle. We don't have a distinction for that because it's considered livestock.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Okay.
Was the applicant forced to apply for this because somebody complained?
No. It's because they wanted to, they wanted to do this. They wanted to have a cow on the, on the property. And we said, well, you need to rezone it to RA-20. So, they said, okay.
How many acres does he own?
This is 3.7 acres.
How much is in pasture?
I really can't say. It's, looks like all lawn. I don't know.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Now, according to the Comprehensive 2050 Plan, is this area within what we would describe as a transition zone?
It's not, as long as it remains as employment. The residential component, I honestly don't remember. It might be.
Okay. It might be in a transition zone?
Yes.
Did either Stallings or Indian Trail offer any objections to this application?
Stallings didn't respond. Indian Trail was neutral. They said, we don't, we don't see a problem with this.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Would any type of feedlot be allowed?
You mean, what do you mean by feedlot?
An acre with fence around it with 30, 40 head of cattle? Feedlot?
Technically, you could put 30 or 40 cows in there on one acre if you wanted to.
Is there existing pasture there now? Or maybe the-
I honestly don't know. I only looked at it from the road. The property owner might be able to answer those questions.
Okay.
I mean, this is what it looks like. Site itself, you can see it's a lot of grass. So, not sure it's so much pasture land as it is just lawn.
All right. Can we hear from the landowner?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, I want to request to convert this from residential to RA-20 because I want to have a cow and a horse. Because I like to have it and want to, you know, it's my dream. Because my background as a farmer back in India. So, I want to have a couple of cows here and horses to have it there. That's the purpose of this, to change it. So, if you have any questions, I can answer.
How many, how much pasture do you have? How much land do you have in pasture? I assume you have a pasture for your horse now?
There are grass. It's already pasture. It's about, I would say about three acres. And one acre, I think in the corner, maybe the house around it. So, rest is pasture.
So, is the, do you have the horse now also?
No. I don't have-
Oh, you don't have either one of the animals?
I don't have anything.
Okay. So, you don't have the fenced-in area you're going to keep them?
I don't have the fence right now.
Okay.
But I have a plan to put the fences and everything before I get anything.
All righty.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Do you have an idea how many cows you want to put there?
Yes. Not more than two. Not more than two.
Would you have a problem if we said a limit of three?
Well, I'm working, so-
Sir?
This is a straight rezoning. Conditions cannot be imposed on this. It's either up or it's down.
Okay. Okay. All right. Commissioner Rush, the road being right at the bypass. So, you're, it looks like it's right next to the bypass? Is there any land between you and the expressway?
Yes. There is, I think, one piece of land that is now, I think, it's like a pond. But I believe the transportation used that land to build the highway. So, between highway and our property, there is a, this land, and they already fenced on that side completely. So, nobody can enter that side.
Okay. All right. We'll listen to, we've got some individuals signed up to speak, and we'll, we'll hear what they have to say.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh-huh.
First one is Pam Key Verma.
Hello, sir.
Oh, okay. All right. You signed up. Okay. How about a Darren Dees?
I did sign up, and I'm good. So, I don't need to say anything. Thank you.
Okay. All right. That concludes the speakers, and we will close the public hearing. Thank Next, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent.
Okay. We have a motion to approve. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Our next item is under business. And Michelle Lancaster, if you'll come up and help us with the ARPA update, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I am going to provide the Board with an update on our Rescue Plan Act funding that the county is receiving. You're going to receive the staff recommendation for the funding allocations during this presentation. I'm not going to ask you to take any action tonight. As we talked about earlier, you're going to have a workshop on November 12th where you're going to receive some additional information regarding potential water lines. So, we want you to have that additional information so that you can make your final decision on these allocation recommendations. So, tonight, you're just going to receive this information. And then, in the, we can take questions tonight or in the interim two weeks, we'll be able to answer questions as well. And you will see this item for action on your November 15th regular meeting agenda. So, just a few highlights that have previously been shared with you. These are the funding details of the Recovery Act dollars that we are receiving. So, we've been allocated $46.6 million. We have received half of that funding, and we'll receive the remaining half in the next six to 18 months. Here, you can see the funding objectives that were passed along from Treasury. I won't read all of those, those words to you, but to support urgent COVID response efforts, replace lost public sector revenue, if there was any, to support immediate economic stabilization for households and businesses, and to work to address systemic public health and economic challenges that were contributed from the COVID pandemic. And just a reminder that the municipalities received funds directly from this funding allocation, different than what we had received initially when we received money that we had to pass along to the municipalities. This, again, is information that you've seen previously. These are the potential uses that were outlined by the interim guidance that has been passed along to us. So, this is just to give you that sense of what you could use the dollars for. And as the last bullet notes, very broad uses allowed in terms of how you can spend these dollars. You'll all recall that we had a staff put together a Recovery Act Committee of folks from the community who worked, spent a great deal of time over a few weeks to look at what the Recovery Act dollars were to be used for, to engage in their community circles, and to come back with some recommendations. And these are those recommendations that were presented to you a few months ago that they had put together in levels, Level 1, Level 2, Level 3, with all of these items really being seen as important, but with little differences in terms of anonymous support, or unanimous support for Level 1. And then, there were gradations between Level 2 and Level 3. The recommendations that staff is providing are in what I'm calling five buckets or five areas of allocation. These are by no means perfect. These really have taken in different feedback that we've received from the committee that was put together, from staff, from additional research that we've done. There's lots of meetings going on around organizations in North Carolina, around the country. All local governments are looking at how they can spend these dollars, and really are looking at how we can give the most broad allocation of this one-time infusion of funds to Union County. And so, the first bucket you see there is COVID-19 mitigation, 15% of the dollars that we're recommending, or $7 million to fund COVID mitigation efforts, medical expenses, behavioral health care, and certain public health and safety staff that can be directly aligned to COVID mitigation. The second bucket is our largest bucket, $20.9 million or 45% of the allocation for strategic investments in county services. This is really looking to invest, to improve access to clean drinking water. There's the potential there to support wastewater and stormwater infrastructure if the Board desired. The third one is community and economic support with 20% of the allocation, $9.3 million to look at addressing our negative economic or supply chain impacts to community or to county programs that we might have. And, for example, we gave here, library, park and rec, or our food hub project may be eligible for us to consider funds in that area. D is administration. That really is what it sounds like, just how do we administer these funds. We are going to be required to maintain some robust documentation and to put together a thorough compliance methodology. And so, we know it's going to take some resources and support to make sure we do this right. And then, the fifth one is setting aside a holdback bucket of $7 million or 15%. And as you can see here, what we're suggesting is a contingency or reserve fund to provide flexibility over the period that the funds are available to meet any changing regulatory, economic, or public health issues that may come up. I will remind you that this has, you know, a fairly long runway. We have to allocate these dollars by the end of 2024, December 31st, 2024. We have to spend them by the end of 2026. So, that's why we see there's still a lot of uncertainty in the environment. The rules are not final. We keep anticipating Treasury finalizing the rules. That has not happened. There are ongoing congressional efforts to look at, frankly, broadening the scope that the dollars can be spent, putting fewer restrictions on local governments. That has passed the Senate. It has not passed the House. And then, we're still waiting on the state budget to see how the state plans to spend their dollars, because we think that's important to know. So, our next steps are really putting together our internal support and governance structure to make sure that we're clearly following the Treasury guidelines. And that's going to take some, you know, work on the front end. We want to make sure we do this right. I also note here that rating agencies are going to be looking at how we use these dollars. We want to make sure we're not getting, you know, sideways with that. And we're going to put together a staff team from our budget group, finance, procurement, the manager's office. We will consult with legal and really work through an oversight of approach and philosophy that can be defended as we go through this process. And then, all programs and projects would come to the Board for final approval, along with a monthly report to the Board regarding the programs and projects and how those funds have been used over the life of this funding. As I mentioned, we'll be bringing this back for final approval on the 15th. Happy today to answer any questions that you may have about how we've made these recommendations.
I have a question in the sense that we have to be spent by 2026.
Yes.
Some of the items you had listed have a long runway for once you decide to spend the money, i.e. water or sewer.
Yes. And what I would say to that is, I think, in putting these numbers together and talking about them, what we feel like from a staff perspective is this is something that we can manage during that timeframe. So, we think that this is a reasonable recommendation. We, you know, we're open to hearing other ideas. And at the end of the day, this is the Board's decision. But we did consider that in putting the dollars together.
Okay. That's true. Commissioner Rush, can you go back to the slide where we at? The percentages?
Yes.
Okay. The mitigation, now, we've already spent some money, correct, on some costs with-
For insurance.
Healthcare issues.
About 1.6, 1.3.
Okay. So, we spent 1.3. What bucket would that have gone into?
Out of Bucket A.
So, that would have gone out of Bucket A. When I look at strategic investments in county services, 45% are 20, basically 21 million. Now, I see clean drinking water on there, but I also see wastewater and stormwater infrastructure. So, you know, we were looking at years ago, 60 million covering main and secondary roads in the county. We were presented from staff, an option of that.
roads in the county. We were presented from staff, an option of that. And then we're looking at economic support, community economic support, administration, holdback. Another $20 million roughly just in, in those things. I've been playing with this and I'm going to stick firm with it. This water, that, this is an opportunity to put water throughout the county that we've been looking for, for years, that we've told people we haven't had for years. And, and I'm not satisfied with $21 million for water. Not with the programs that we have going on now with the self-help, things like that. You can't help yourself if it's not close to you. So getting it close to people that can then utilize the other $5 million. Otherwise, it's just all going to one section of the county and it's not going to help other parts of the county. Which, when you look at that map, there's 46 million dollars for the county. And then there's another 40, basically million dollars for the municipalities which take up the, another half of the county. So, you know, we need to definitely look at those community partners and say, you know, are you willing to put water lines in your town limits to go along with this? And we could very get very close to that $60 million figure with just a little bit of help from those towns. Also sewer, if they want to provide sewer, sewer is not doing me any good down Belk Mill Road. I'm not interested in spending one nickel of this money on sewer. So, so if we can get, I hope that in our presentation that that number is going to almost double on the water side because, again, we've told people for many years, we can't do it because we can't get the grants that Antson County and other counties have been able to get. This is that chance to get it as close to as many people as possible. And I, I do hope that this board would support that and I, and I hope that staff would come back with that option. And Hung E, he's here. You can spend $40 million and you sleep tonight probably, huh? So I have every confidence you can spend that money, okay? And before 2026. So, so please come back with an option that shows a major investment in water infrastructure in this county. Please. Thank you.
I would like to add one thing to that, Commissioner Rush, and we've talked about this earlier. Our public works capital expenditure has committed 5 million short line extension, 5 million transmission. And we're looking at this year, next year, '23, '24, '25, '26. So we're, we have committed 50 million over five years to that.
Ms. Chairman. And I appreciate this board for standing by that and doing that. However, unless you have a line close to you, it does you no good. And the parts of the county that need this water, not only for drinking water, but for fire protection. Had a lady contact me the other day in the Weddington area and, and she was saying they needed fire hydrant in their neighborhood. They, they have wells, I guess. But they needed a fire hydrant in the neighborhood and they feel like they could have saved a home if they, if they had that. So, so again, it's not just about drinking water and clean drinking water. It's getting it close to people so they have water in emergencies. So the community has water in case of a power outage. When Hurricane Hugo came through, power was out a couple of weeks in areas. If you've got county water, you've got water that you drink and you don't have to go drive somewhere and get it pumped out to you. So, so there's a lot of things, again, that this, this allows, but it takes a major investment. These investments that we're doing over time are great and I'm not pooping those whatsoever. That $5 million is a heck of a lot better than it used to be. But unless you get it near somebody, they can't take advantage of that $5 million per year that we committed in self-help money. So, so in order to get it near them, again, a major investment and we have a major opportunity here. Every dollar that we spend of this money in water infrastructure returns money to this county. It returns money in the way of capacity fees. It returns in TAP fees. It returns in customers that you'll have. It does a major, it, this money keeps giving that way. If you spend it all on things that, you know, just short-term fixes on things or short-term allocations, it, it doesn't do that long-term return of the money. So I really do hope that y'all will take a hard look at that. And I think, and I think that there's interest on this board in doing that. I know Jerry, over many years, has been interested in getting water to this county. I know that Richard has been interested and Dennis, I know you have. And David's new to the board, but I know he's interested in it. So again, this is just something that this is a big pile of money that we've always said we don't have. And, and it's been dropped in our lap and we have an, an opportunity to make more money off this money by using it for infrastructure. And, and that'll get back to Public Works, which will help pay for those $5 million a year short line extension program. So again, please, please, board and please staff, take another look at this and hopefully when we come back, the more money you can put into this for, for helping the county residents, the residents that are not in municipalities that may never see water unless we do something with this. Thank you.
I have, I have a question for you, Commissioner Rush, because I'd like to know where you got the $60 million figure because I know in the past you and I personally have had conversations and talking about getting water throughout the county, we're talking 500 million plus.
Okay.
So, I mean, I'm trying to understand where you get the 60.
There were three options that were given to us and I think 2019, Mr. Manager, by our staff at that time. And the one option was main and secondary roads. Those are roads like 601, which we found out we can't put it down 601 South. But those are roads like 200, 207, 205. It's already down most of 218. But those are the main roads and then those are secondary. In some places, we just got to connect loops. There's, there's places where like on Highway 200, it stops and then a mile or two, I guess it starts back.
Five miles.
So connecting that, making those connections that help stir the water like we've been talking about, need to
We've talked about that, yes.
Keep the water flowing. Those kind of connections in 2022, 2023, it would have cost 18 million dollars to do that. That was the number given to me at that time by the manager. For 18 million dollars, we could have done what it's going to take 60 million dollars to do now. That 60 million dollar figure was the option one. Then there was an option two, and then there was every road in the county, which would have been 300 to 400 million dollars. That's every road in the county, in the municipalities. That's every road in Union County was, was 300 to 400 million dollars. And so those are the options that were given to us. I'm pretty sure 2019 is when we looked at.
It was around that timeframe, but yes, there were three different options. Brian, that was information that the board received from a consultant that was looking at the short line extension project. Help me with the name of the consultant.
Richard McMillan and his company, the Department of Public Safety.
That, that's right. The board received that information and so they, they looked at, you know, the, the three options, you know, just the main lines, something in the middle, an option in the middle, and then like putting a pipe down every road.
And that, that also included every municipality in those numbers. So if the municipalities, we're going to have trouble
Outside of Monroe.
Outside of Monroe, who do their own. But all those municipalities that depend on us, imagine if they spent some of their 40 million, $5 million of it for a municipality or something, could put water lines throughout their communities, just like we had the partnership we did with Indian Trail to help with economic development that this board should be proud of. So there, there's just so many fire insurance ratings. People don't think about that, but if you have a fire hydrant near your home, your fire insurance rating is lower, which would help taxpayers in this county see, see results from that. And Love Mill Road, there's down, down near where I live, and I have water on my road because of the school. But if there's no development in your area and not going to be development, especially high-density development, the chances that you're going to get a developer to run the water line past your house so that you can tap on is just not, not going to be great. So grant money is basically other than, other than a bond. If we put a bond on the ballot to, you know, just like we're going to build schools for 200 million, maybe we could put a $200 million bond on the ballot. But this gets us to a place that, that it's the gift that keeps on giving. It, it gives taxpayers in this county, some of them, it'll give a reduction on their insurance rates. It'll give the fire departments more access to water to be able to put out fires. It just does. This, of all the ways we can spend the money, I can't see any better way and any better return on the investment than, than that. And, and the towns, again, they've got $40 million themselves that take up half of this county. And they can all pitch in and do their own projects and, and we could work with them. And economic development, you're talking about, you know, giving back to the community. The jobs that this would create trying to do this would be especially welcome. You know, high, good, high-paying jobs to put these water lines in. You know, we have companies like Charlotte Pipe here. Other companies can bid, you know, there's, there's plenty of, you know, we just have, this is a good project for Union County and I, and I hope the board and I hope the staff would support doing better than $21 million, especially when we see all the benefits. And some of these towns, some of the towns could come back and give money for libraries or for these other, you know, little projects that, that we have going on in their areas. You know, I know Jerry's area down where he's at, there's people have been desperate for water for years and wanting water and, and there's, there's all kinds of things. There's growth potential, but that's good and bad. You're not going to have high density without sewer in those areas. So, but you still have the potential that people could give land to their children for houses and that's going to give us back. What's the, what's the capacity fee for, for water on a new house? Hung E? Yes, sir.
Mr. Manager, would you task Brian and Hung, and I'm hoping Black and Beach at the November 12th workshop, they'll be able, did you say they would be able to give us some cost of putting lines in the ground?
Yes, yes, sir. That's Brown and Caldwell. Brown and Caldwell's doing that work.
Well, I want, I want the data, the numbers, so I can start figuring and just see, I mean, I can multiply. And it would be nice to know how many, how many miles of transmission lines to fulfill his proposal it would take. And then we can multiply it by the number and we'll know what we're looking at.
I've seen a preliminary presentation. I think the board will be pleased with what it sees in terms of the, the types of information and the data that's going to be provided on the 12th.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And Ms. Chairman, please, you know, to answer the question too, is, is if you look at it per house, like, like we do a self-help project. If you go through a neighborhood and it's one acre lots, you get a number per house. But when you go down a road like Highway 200 with farm fields and, and areas that people haven't even tapped on to, those are the houses that are going to be paying, you know, when you say like $50,000 a house. Well, when you're going past empty fields, it could be expanded greatly over the time. We put in a $30 million pipeline from the water plant to, to Indian Trail area. We're talking about putting in another 20 something million dollar pipeline from the water plant just to wing it. So when you're looking at investments in infrastructure, how, how many houses tap on to those? The answer is none directly to that pipeline, but it has to be put in to get it close to where you can use it. So, thank you.
I'd like, Brian, if you, you know, I'm a big proponent of the short line extension, have been since its inception. A lot of the homes that need it for health and safety are on secondary roads. So I'd be interested to know how many doing the secondary roads, as Commissioner Rush suggests, how many that would benefit. On the 12th, if you can, if you can give me a swag, okay? But, so, because going past those empty fields is an opportunity for a developer, not, not necessarily for
We'll try to get, we'll try to get you around them.
Deputy Manager, I thank you for asking this to be information only because there's, you know, it's tip of the iceberg. And I see some things that, that could benefit greatly from some of these funds that aren't listed here. So further discussion will be, give us an opportunity to make sure we make a good decision.
Yes, please feel free to reach out to me and provide additional information.
Okay, Ms. Chairman, one more comment, please. You, you know, you said that that would be helpful to a developer. If that's not what we're doing by building a pipeline to the western part of the county and spending $30 million on it. I mean, I, if you're going to, everything benefits developers. This would be more of a benefit to the people who have lower insurance rates, who have water in times of power outage. This, this isn't a, is a anti-developer, pro-developer thing. This is a pro-community thing. It's been promised for years to a lot of people.
Well, thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Next, we have Commissioner Williams. You asked that I'd be adding
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The motion has to do with this board authorizing an exploratory initiative, basically a fact-finding initiative to investigate how we might better allocate water and sewer, how we might define service areas in an environment where we're expanding the, the water and sewer public work system. So it's, there's not, you know, it's, it's a fact-finding kind of initiative, I think. So there's not a lot of detail in the motion, but I would like this board to authorize an exploratory initiative where at least a couple commissioners, I know we can't do more than that, but at least a couple commissioners and staff will commit themselves to exploring how we might, how we might define service areas for water and sewer and how we might allocate capacity in, as we continue to grow the system.
Okay.
Commissioner Williams, as I mentioned earlier to you, if Commissioner Rush would accept the ask, I would like for it to be you and Commissioner Rush to make that trip with staff. Stony, would you be agreeable to that?
I'll agree with that.
Sounds good.
Okay, you made a motion?
Yes, sir.
He made a motion. The motions do the exploratory?
Yes, for this board to authorize the exploratory initiative.
Okay.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Now, this may be a little bit of a loose analogy, but Peter Drucker said that you can't manage what you can't measure. Development's been moving at an ever-increasing rate in this county and it's been driven to a great extent by the municipalities. We've been somewhat reactionary to this point. We need to be more proactive. I commend Commissioner Williams for bringing this forward. I fully support it.
Thank you, sir.
All right. We have a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Again, thank you, David, for, that's an excellent suggestion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next, we have the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting times. It's been brought to our attention by a number of citizens that our three o'clock and sometimes our six o'clock is not as friendly to their schedules to give them an opportunity. And I see some of those shaking their heads back there. And I think the option is to look at going back to our seven o'clock meetings. And any discussion? Commissioner Rush?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When, when we did this, it was a, I thought it was a very good idea because it kept staff, I know there was times where before, you know, staff would stay until 11. Jerry, I think you've been in some midnight meetings maybe, where staff had to stay
Extension meetings or commissioner meetings?
No, commissioner meetings, commissioner meetings. So, you know, I, I can make it work as a, as a business owner who, who can, but it's tough. And, and my daughter's sitting in the back today because of this. I had to pick her up from school and I couldn't get her back home and then here, which she's fine. She loves to come watch me work, right? So, so it's, it's, I got to thinking about it. What if another commissioner, you know, I've, I've had young children throughout my commissioner term and, and it does help to be able to do it. And maybe not seven, it could be six. I think one problem that I find myself trying to make decisions on is is this a three o'clock meeting or a six o'clock meeting? And, and so even, even if it were six o'clock, that would give people time to get off work and, and get here. So I understand staff's and times are important and, but for people to be able to attend our meetings and for people to be able to participate, you know, we may want to consider this. And whether it's six o'clock or seven, I'll leave up to the board. I'm fine with seven, but I'm fine with six. I'll wait for somebody to make a motion.
I agree with Commissioner Rush. I would like to stick with the six and maybe we could we could, Deputy Manager Lancaster, can we maybe arrange the agenda where we could put all the fluff at the beginning so that it would give people, maybe move the informal comments down to us? Could we move it, could it be moved down so it would give them like the six-thirtieth?
We can move things around however you would like. I would suggest if you want six o'clock as the schedule, and I spoke to Commissioner Rushing earlier, I think he was thinking this could start at our January schedule going forward. So we could bring you back a couple of options at one of the next meetings so that you can set that schedule, and we can look at, I can work with Clayton and Lynn on the agenda, and we'll bring you back something that I think could work if that's what you're interested in.
We clearly want to be considerate of staff, and I know that it has been a benefit for staff in many ways. But like Commissioner Rake said, I know that sometimes three o'clock meeting, it's difficult to get anything else done during the day. So I think we need to, if staff will come back next meeting, give us a presentation on whether six or seven works, and we'd like to hear from our constituents. You know, like I said, I see some out there nodding their head. I'd love to talk with you about it and find out their thoughts, and then we could take action on doing something there.
We will do that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The next meeting will be a three o'clock meeting, right? We may either want to change the time of that or wait till the six o'clock meeting. So if we're going to hear from the public, that might be a better.
I'm talking about the public getting into contact with us now. The public reaches out to us on a regular, so, you know, with our emails and everything. So let staff come back and tell us something. Okay. Any further discussion? And after that, next is our county manager's comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As already has been stated once tonight, on November the 12th, there will be a workshop for the Board of County Commissioners beginning at 9:00 a.m. That's a Friday morning. We will have our consultants, consulting engineering firm Brown and Caldwell here to give the board an update on their work regarding the water sewer master plan. You will be receiving information regarding water transmission mains and how, Brown and Caldwell will need some feedback from the board related to how do we choose where these water transmission mains go? Are we looking, are we giving more priority to areas where there are wells with bad water? Are we giving higher priority to areas that are more densely populated? Are we giving higher priority to functions that would improve the system, like closing loops and, you know, trying to eliminate dead ends and things like that? Or is it a combination of those? But I believe this board is well-versed enough to be able to give Brown and Caldwell some meaningful feedback that will help then continue to develop that plan and feed into the development of these water transmission mains that could be, in part, if not, well, it's a large project, and certainly much larger than the forty-six million dollars we have in ARP money right now, that will continue for years. But it will set the stage for exactly how that happens now and in the future, and how quickly we can get started on these projects. As was stated earlier, you know, there is a time limit on this ARP money. And, you know, if large projects like water transmission mains are going to be a large part of what we spend our money on, we need to get started on that sooner rather than later. So I look forward to a very productive discussion regarding that topic on November the 12th at 9:00 a.m.
Thank you, sir.
Another, two items, if I might. One, Commissioner Rushing, you mentioned the lower fire insurance ratings for homes, and two things came to mind I'd like to share with the board. I believe we did share at the last meeting that on October the 16th, all the Union County fire departments in the county participated in a certification exercise where all the tankers in the fleet, in our fire department's fleet across the county, were certified. And this is the first time that that has happened. We've certified departments individually in the past, and, but this was the first time they certified every unit and every asset across the county. One of the things that will come as a result of that, it will help to lower the insurance ratings for every fire district across the county. So we appreciate all the volunteer firemen, the full county fire services that we have in the county, and their participation, cooperation, and collaboration in that project because it was a massive undertaking on that day. Commissioner Rushing, you mentioned the fire. That fire took place on Monday, October the 25th at 5:00 a.m., and it started in the garage. The fire departments were able to knock that fire down and contain it to the garage. But in order to do that, they had to lay four thousand feet of five-inch hose and stage multiple tanker, or multiple pumpers along that route to keep that fire, to keep that water pressure up in order to get that water down to that fire. I'd just like to mention the fire departments that took place in that operation because, again, it demonstrates the level of training, commitment, cooperation that we have in Union County amongst all of our volunteer fire departments. All of Wesley Chapel's departments participated, Station 43, 26, and 31. I believe Baker's Fire Department participated in that. Stallings participated in that. And Pleasant Valley Fire Department out of Indianland, South Carolina, actually came up for mutual aid on that, on that fire. And we, I say we, that two tankers were used in that operation also. About fifty-five hundred gallons of water got pumped through those tankers and through the water that was carried on the trucks before the line actually got, the water got flowing through the line. So that was quite an operation that took place so early on a Monday morning. But certainly appreciate all the efforts that were given that morning. And everything except the garage was saved on that house. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Commissioner Simpson?
No further comments.
Commissioner Rushing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again, as a nineteen-year-old, I watched my grandparents' house burn while a swimming pool, basically, an above-ground pool was set up in front of that house. And it was in a rural area of Stanley County. But water, again, water and access to it, instead of getting out of ponds, getting out of a fire hydrant is something that people just don't think about if you have water. And if you have county water, God bless you, and, you know, it's, you know, it's a great thing. But if you don't have it, and when your water, again, the power's out or whatever, you have other issues to it. So, and good job for the fire departments for doing that. And the lady, I gave her the self-help program information, and she was thankful to receive that. So if they determine that that's what they want to do, then they can go through.
And my understanding, that is a community that probably would qualify for that self-help program. So I hope that they submit an application.
And she was very excited to receive that news, but it's got to be close. And she's got it closed. She just has to get it closer. The, this board has committed great resources to doing the self-help program. This board's done a lot for water, more than has been done in the past. And so don't let it be misunderstood that I'm complaining because there have been limitations. You know, we've talked about in the past how we never had the water source. You know, back when we were talking about building a sewer plant in 2006, we didn't have a water source for that sewer plant. It would have been kataba water or nothing, and there was no way of getting any other water except for maybe for Anniston County. So there are many complex things to this that the people in this county are just, we need some, we just need some big seed money behind it to get it closer to people who really do need it. We had a map. The manager showed me a map a few weeks ago that had one neighborhood in particular in southern Union County near Waxall, that it almost looked like every house in that neighborhood had arsenic in the well. It was a cluster of maybe twenty or thirty dots right on top of each other. And one water line close to that would probably be a very well-used self-help money program that could have, that one neighborhood looked like, I mean, again, it looked like every well in that neighborhood had arsenic. So those kind of things, just getting it close to people that they can help would be great. And again, looking forward to a good election tomorrow. So candidates that are running, good luck, and hopefully they will, you know, it's not what it seems like when you're running. So hopefully you'll get a taste of victory, and you'll understand that we need to do things working together, as Commissioner Williams stated earlier, with these water and sewer issues. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No comments other than to say good luck to the candidates tomorrow in the local elections. And competition's a great thing, whether it's the marketplace of business or the marketplace of politics and ideas. The more entrants, the more competition, the better. Thank you.
Mr. Rake?
Beverly, I'd like to compliment you and your financial staff for this very sharp-looking adopted operating and capital budget, and I appreciate the punctuality. I did go to that fire training up there, and the one thing that resonated from the volunteer firemen was they said, "Thank you for instituting this new fire tax where they can work with their board of trustees and be a little more self-controlling but yet have to answer to their board." So I do congratulate our board on putting, getting that in place. And the fire departments, there were some very nice trucks up there. New Salem had a tanker up there and had a really young, looked like farm boy in it. And I said, "What do you think about that truck?" He said, "This is about the nicest thing I've ever seen." So they really appreciate the equipment they have. Thank you.
And I as well watched and got a tour of the tankers being tested. It was, it was a demonstration of cooperation among the departments. It was very impressive. Also, we've got coming up this weekend our annual airshow. And it is, and I've been to a number of airshows up and down the East Coast, and maybe I'm partial, but it's one of the most impressive, and it's a more vintage aircraft. But the thing that excites me the most about it is they are recognizing and honoring the veterans of this county. We've got a couple coffee houses that do that as well. But Saturday, we kick it off with recognition of veterans. And then we recognize from our schools those that have excelled in ROTC. And these are young people that are the future of our military. And today, more than any time that I can remember in history, that's important. So I hope to see y'all out there at the airshow. It's well worth it. It's exciting. I think they're advertising, they got three P-51s flying this year. So, and I appreciate the city of Monroe, their focus on recognizing the veterans in our community. And with that, yes, Mr. Manager?
Mr. Chairman, with regard to those Patriot Awards for the ROTC, I believe this is going to be the twentieth year that the Board of County Commissioners has recognized the outstanding cadet from each of the ROTC programs across Union County.
And I tell you, they are proud as they go across. The manager and I, the last time we had one, we had the opportunity to present them to them, and we're going to do that again. This is coming Saturday. So we're looking forward to meeting these young people and being able to shake the hand of our future. So with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?